The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting will be televised via channel eighteen and may be viewed via the channel eighteen website at http colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of barnstable dot us slash cable cast public site. Real time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to zoning board appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The zoom link is https colon slash slash town of barnstable dot us dot zoom dot us slash J slash eight five zero four zero seven nine two eight nine six or call eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and enter the meeting ID eight five zero four zero seven nine two eight nine six. Applicants, representatives and individuals required entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentations should be submitted to the in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot ma dot us so that they may be displayed for public remote access viewing. Copies application are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or again emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot ma dot us. Call order with introduction of board members, Herb Bunsy.
I am present at trouble with my news.
Paul Pennard.
I'm here.
Aaron Webb.
I'm here.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
And Mark Hanson is absent. Alright, notice of recording, please note this meeting is recorded and broadcast on channel eighteen and in accordance with MGL chapter thirty A section twenty, I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting and please make their presence known. Seeing none, first order was minutes, uh, February twenty second twenty twenty-three. Need a motion to approve in a second?
I will move to approve.
Oh, second of motion.
Seconds, uh, roll call vote, Herb Bunsy.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
Not there.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor, so our meeting minutes are approved. Um, we have no old business, so straight to new business. Uh, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six Denise M Anderson trustee of the Anderson seventy-seven Parker Road nominee trust has petitioned for two variances from section two forty dash thirteen E residency RC district bulk regulations and two forty dash thirty-six resource protection overlay district RPOD. The petitioner seeks two variances to unmerge lot one forty thousand seventy-five square feet from lot two, a developed lot containing forty-three thousand nine hundred fifteen square feet. Pursuant to the plan prepared by Sullivan Engineering Consulting Incorporated. The subject property is located at seventy-seven Parker Road, Osterl, Massachusetts. As shown on assessor's map one one seven as parcel one three five, it's located in the residence CRC zoning district. Um, we received a letter from attorney Schultz asking to continue this to our April twelfth meeting. Um, I did tell him that we have a somewhat busy schedule that day, so there's a possibility we will forcibly continue further. Um, and he was okay with that. Have a motion to continue to April twelfth.
So move.
In a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Herb Bunsy.
Favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor. So that moves that one. Um, alright, appeal number two zero two three dash zero zero seven. Brazilian Assembly of God in Hyannis has applied for a modification permit in in accordance with section two forty dash eight A three modification permit for exempt uses. The applicant, a nonprofit religious institution proposes an approximately nine thousand four hundred square foot addition to the existing church on the property, the expansion will increase the number of seats and the existing steeple will be removed and the bridge line lowered. The proposed proposed expansion will meet all building setbacks except for the southerly side yard setback, which is proposed at eleven feet or thirty feet required. The proposed five hundred and seventy-six seats require a hundred ninety-two parking spaces where eighty-three currently exist. The applicant has parking agreements with the budding properties. Zoning relief is requested in accordance with two forty thirty-three E bulk requirement side side yard setback. Section two forty dash fifty-six schedule of off-road, off-street parking in section two forty dash thirty-three special screening requirements. The subject property is located at nine fifty-nine Mary Dunn Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map three three two is parcel zero one two. It's located in the IND industrial zoning district. So, um, let's see, one, two, three. Um, so sitting on this will be our regular members. Herb Bunsy, Paul Pennard. Aaron Webb. And myself. Is that right, five?
That's four, I think.
One, two, three. Oh, so Denise, you're all still sitting on this. Alright. Um, Attorney Cox, is that you?
That that's me, yes, thank you very much.
Ready.
Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Liza Cox, I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan and Fish in Hyannis, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. Um, I am gonna share my screen, if that's okay, and walk through a few slides to help me describe the project and the request. Okay. So, um, joining me this evening on our zoom call are Dennis De Silva, who is the pastor of the church. Glenn Knowles is here, who's the project architect, and Dan Ogula from Downkeep Engineering, who's the civil engineer for the project. Um, the property, as, um, the chair indicated in the notice, is located at nine fifty-nine Mary Dunn Road. It's shown here on this, uh, Google Earth image. And just to orient the board, here is Mary Dunn, here's Independence Drive. Um, I'll be talking a little bit about the Trinity Christian Academy School, which is right here. The, um, closest abutter to where the addition is proposed is the Carriage House apartment building, which is located directly to the south of the church, um, here on my screen. And then I'll also be talking about, uh, capabilities, which is located across Independence Drive, uh, in this location. So, um, the subject property, and here's a blow up of it again from, um, Google Earth. Uh, the subject property has about two point two one acres, um, a little over two hundred feet of frontage on Mary Dunn. It, um, was developed, uh, in two thousand, so about twenty-three years ago, with, uh, a church that consists of about fourteen thousand three hundred square feet. Um, at the time, only site plan review was required in terms of zoning permitting, and it did go through that process with the town in two thousand. There are, um, eighty-three onsite parking spaces, and as you'll see, um, the church is pretty much proposing to keep the existing parking layout uh, as it currently exists under proposed conditions. There is an onsite septic, uh, system, and as part of this proposal and expansion, the church will be abandoning the onsite septic and connecting to town sewer. Um, and as, uh, was noted in the legal notice, the site is within the industrial zoning district and the WP wellhead protection overlay. Um, this isn't a great, uh, reproduction of the site plan, but you all should have that in your materials as well. Um, I, I wanted to walk through the proposed expansion, which is shown roughly in red outline on this, uh, graphic, the existing building being right here. So the church has a, um, very active congregation that is outgrowing the existing seating capacity uh, within the existing facility. As I noted earlier, the church is about twenty-three years old on the site. And so, um, in an attempt to meet that, uh, growing congregation, the church is proposing an approximately nine thousand four hundred square foot addition, again, shown in red on this, uh, screen. And that, um, square footage, that nine thousand four hundred square feet is split out over, uh, two floors. So that's not a footprint expansion, that's a gross floor area expansion of the building. Um, and the predominant purpose of it is to increase the seating capacity, uh, primarily within the main sanctuary by about two hundred seats. In addition, and I'll show you, um, architectural plans in a moment. Um, the proposed renovations will allow for a more modern architectural design for the church, um, including removing the existing steeple and lowering the, uh, roof of the church. Um, as I mentioned also, as part of this expansion, the church will be, uh, removing the existing onsite septic and connecting to the municipal wastewater system. Um, as you can see from this graphic, the expansion is sort of focused in two areas to the east, so closer to Mary Dunn. Um, the expansion will allow for, um, a new and enlarged lobby and entrance area to the church, and the expansion to the south, um, allows for the main sanctuary to be expanded. In terms of zoning, uh, the proposed building condition meets all of the building setback requirements except for the southerly setback, um, along this, this property line, um, which is proposed at eleven feet. The proposed condition will comply with the building coverage requirements of the IND district with a little over twelve percent proposed where twenty-five percent is allowed. In addition, the proposed condition, um, continues to comply with the WP requirements, including, uh, the max impervious coverage of fifty percent with about forty-seven point six five percent proposed and with the green state requirements of the WP, which require a minimum of thirty percent. And here, um, forty-three point eight percent are proposed. Um, in terms of the floor plan and and this plan sort of orients the building differently, so Mary Dunn would be right here and the, uh, apartment building to the south located on this top of the screen. Um, this shows the proposed floor plan, the existing footprint of the building is, um, sort of here that demarcated by that red line, and then the addition, um, is this area. So again, with the main sanctuary being redesigned and extending, um, towards the setback and then a new lobby entrance area closer to Mary Dunn Road. Um, for the elevations, um, these graphics show the existing steeple and roof height being removed, and then the lower roof and more modern design of the proposed addition. Again, this is the area that would be removed, and these are the new roof lines. So, um, as, um, a nonprofit, uh, religious institution, the applicant qualifies for the protections of the Dover Amendment, which are codified in Mass General laws forty-eight section three, which essentially provide that a use, um, an exempt use is exempt from use zoning, but that a city or town may apply reasonable dimensional requirements to that exempt use. And Barnstable in its zoning ordinance, and I, um, indicate the citation here on this screen, um, clarifies what those reasonable regulations are in Barnstable, and it provides that they shall be deemed to be the bulk requirements, sorry, bulk regulations of the zoning district, except that church steeples may be permitted up to seventy-five feet in height, the off-street parking regulations and site plan review. And here, um, we did go through site plan review and completed that process, um, receiving a letter from the site plan review committee in February of this year. Um, in addition, the Barnstable zoning ordinance provides that where an exempt use does not comply with the, those reasonable regulations, that the zoning board shall by modification permit, um, allow for the modification of bulk requirements or parking requirements where such regulation would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of a proposed development or impair the character of a development so as to affect its intended use, provided that the modification will not create a public safety hazard along the adjacent roadways and will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties such that it will impair the use of those properties. Here, um, as noted in the notice, we have, uh, requested modification permit relief from three requirements. The first, and I'll, I'll go through, um, each of these in subsequent slides, but the first is, um, from section two forty thirty-three E, which sets forth the bulk regulations of the IND district and specifically, uh, the side yard setback. Um, section two forty fifty-six, the off-street parking requirements, and then if necessary, um, two forty thirty-three F, the special screening requirement. And so, just quickly. So in terms of the side yard setback, the existing, uh, church is set approximately thirty-one feet from, uh, this southerly property boundary. And as I mentioned, uh, previously, under proposed conditions, it will be eleven feet from that property boundary. Um, as noted, the primary purpose of this expansion is to expand the church's, uh, main sanctuary to provide additional seating for this growing congregation. And because of the church's existing orientation on the property, um, again, located about, pretty much at the setback, um, compliance with the thirty feet, uh, side yard setback would, uh, substantially impair and diminish the use. Specifically, it would not allow for the sanctuary to be expanded without entirely redesigning the interior of the existing building and redesigning and likely reducing the existing parking area. Under proposed conditions, the church is not proposing, um, really to touch the, the parking area except just a little bit in the front where, um, this proposed, the front lobby addition is located. Um, in addition, uh, granting the requested relief and reducing the setback to eleven feet as proposed um, will not create any, uh, safety, public safety hazards on adjacent roadways and will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties. And in fact, really the only property that it could be potentially impacted by this request, which is the Carriage House Apartments, has submitted a letter of support for the project, and that was included as exhibit B of the application materials that we provided. With reference to, um, the parking spaces and the relief being sought. Oops, sorry. Um, based on, uh, the number of proposed seats, the zoning ordinance would require a total of a hundred and ninety-two onsite parking spaces. Here, the church is proposing access to two hundred and thirteen parking spaces, and those are eighty-three spaces onsite, um, including the accessible spaces. Sixty-one spaces, uh, proposed at the immediately abutting Trinity Academy and sixty-nine spaces, uh, proposed at capabilities. And we did submit, again, as part of the application material, materials, letter agreements from those two abutting properties, um, confirming their willingness to allow the church to utilize their parking, um, either on Tuesday evenings and Sunday services in the case of capabilities or during the Sunday services in the case of Trinity Academy. Um, I would note, as it relates to the capabilities, parking spaces, um, the church, uh, has a shuttle that it use, what is proposing to use to move people from the capabilities, parishioners from the capabilities location to the church and then back at the end of the service so that these, um, parishioners who are parking here won't have to walk along Mary Dunn. As it relates to Trinity Academy, as you can see from this graphic, there is a connection for pedestrians between the two sites. In fact, this is a relationship that's existed, um, with these properties for a long time. And so, um, it's one that, uh, over the years, um, has worked out very well, and there's a very good working relationship between, uh, the church and the school and capabilities. Um, in terms of use of these off-site spaces, the existing eighty-three parking spaces on the church property are adequate for, um, all of the daily church activities that occur throughout the week. And it's really only during the services when the requirement for off-site parking would come into play. And so, um, presently, the church has two services, um, one is on Tuesday evenings. They usually have about a hundred to a hundred and forty people attend that service. Um, for the most part, the parking spaces onsite are adequate for the Tuesday evening services. If necessary, though, as you may have seen in the capabilities letter, uh, capabilities is, uh, allowing the church to use its parking space during, um, those evening hours if needed for overflow parking. On Sundays, um, the church has, uh, Sunday schools starting at nine and then service at ten thirty. And that's really when sort of the more intense use of the parking spaces occurs. Um, and as you again saw from the letter agreements, um, both Trinity and capabilities are, uh, proposing to, um, allow the church to use their parking spaces, uh, during the Sunday service. Um, finally moving to the last, um, uh, relief requested, and and I had put if necessary because it's not entirely clear to me that this, um, does require relief, but in abundance of caution, we have gone ahead and requested it. So as you may recall, the zoning ordinance, um, talks about the reasonable regulations that, uh, are applied to exempt uses, and those include the bulk regulations of the zoning district. Here, the IND district has a special screening requirement of essentially a thirty-foot vegetated perimeter. Um, however, that special screening requirement is not within the so-called bulk regulations of the ordinance. So, um, subsection E of the, um, industrial zoning district contains the bulk regulations like lot size, setbacks, building coverage, and this is not contained in those, um, bulk regulations, and that in fact is the title of subsection E. Subsection F of the IND district has that special screening requirement. So I question frankly whether these bulk reg, this is a bulk regulation that would be applicable to an exempt use. I think it isn't, but again, to be cautious, um, because the proposed addition will extend into that thirty-foot, what is now a thirty-foot uh, vegetated area, um, we have sought relief from those bulk regulations, again, for the same justification and reasoning as, um, that for the side yard setback. I mean, you know, in applying and looking at, um, the section, the modification permit section of, uh, the Town of Barnstable zoning ordinance, and I referred to this trustees of Tufts College versus City of, um, Medford, uh, Supreme Judicial Court case, which is a Dover amendment case that explored the reasonableness of applying, uh, dimensional requirements to exempt uses, which is sort of the, uh, statute standard. And, um, I have a quote here that has language that may look very familiar to the board because this language is very similar to what's contained in the Town of Barnstable zoning ordinance. And so it provides that the educational institution, um, might, uh, show, question the reasonableness of a dimensional requirement um, by demonstrating that compliance would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of a proposed structure or impair the character of the institution's campus without appreciably advancing a municipality's legitimate concerns. Again, that's very similar to the standard that's contained in our zoning ordinance. The court in that case went on to say that excessive cost of compliance with the requirement imposed on an educational institution without significant gain in terms of municipal ter, municipal concerns might also qualify as unreasonable regulation of an educational use. And here, as I mentioned previously, we submit that application of the setback and screening regulations um, would necessitate changing the location of the existing sanctuary within the building, significant interior remodeling, redesigning the parking area, redesigning and changing site infrastructure, um, all at significant cost to create the additional seating that the church requires. Um, similarly, not, um, it is just not possible to provide the required a hundred ninety-two parking spaces on the site absent something like a parking garage, um, which we suggest would be unreasonable, um, in terms of expense and also, uh, you know, infrastructure, based on the fact that these spaces are only needed partially on Tuesday evenings and on Sunday mornings. And here you have a situation where you have a budding property owners willing to share their spaces. Moreover, since there's no safety hazards on adjacent roadways and no nuisance to the surrounding properties, here the surrounding properties are the properties that have either issued a letter of support or, um, have agreed to, uh, allow for the sharing of parking spaces. Um, we think the modification permit standard is met. And so we ask the board, um, to, uh, please grant the relief. Our whole team is here, if you have any questions of me or of Dennis, uh, in terms of the church operations, um, Glenn in terms of the proposed design or floor plans, and Dan in terms of the site plan. Um, at the appropriate time, I do have two, um, very minor comments on the suggested conditions of the staff report, which I can either go through now, Mr. Chairman, or wait until you tell me. Um, but that, that concludes our presentation, and, um, we thank the board and the staff for their time.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Cox. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Forget that.
Um, I've got a couple. Um, how many parking spaces are in these agreements? It does not seem to specify a number of what our total available are gonna be.
Yeah, um, I have that, so the total ends up being two hundred and thirteen spaces, and that is comprised by eighty-three onsite, sixty-one spaces at the, uh, Trinity Academy and sixty-nine spaces at capabilities.
And a hun, so a hundred ninety-two are required, so you're exceeding the requirement at that point?
That's right.
Okay. Um, and then was the site lighting and landscape plan submitted?
Um, we, we didn't do that because there's really no change to those, and Dan, I don't know if you wanna comment on that.
No, we, we would, uh, respectfully request that the, the existing site plan you saw from the Google Earth, there's a couple of trees shown on there, but it's very heavily wooded all the way around the perimeter and back. Uh, and the front has some nice street trees and very attractive landscaping, and we wouldn't be touching any of that. So we didn't bother to, uh, do that separately, so hopefully the site plan could, um, and and the existing conditions could, uh, suffice for that.
Okay, did, has anyone run that by Kate? That was Kate Maldonado, Maldonado's request at site plan.
Yeah, that she signed off on it, the site plan review committee signed off on the plans that we had provided.
Okay. And then I assume Kate probably reviewed, I, I don't know what the design standards are for the IND, but it just in terms of the facade of the front, it looks like a lot of glass and metal, which I thought we had some site standard restrictions for that.
No, there's no site design restrictions in the IND district.
Okay.
Building fine.
Yeah, and we're, we're not an old King's Highway on this one.
Right.
That's all I have for questions.
You know, um, Jake, on, on the, this is Paul, on the proposed, um, number three conditions, um, I would like to see something that says, um, that they must provide continuous parking provisions on and off-site for at least a hundred ninety-two spaces. Uh, number three reads now, they just have to have it prior to construction. And I, I think obviously we want that continuous so that it doesn't become a public safety hazard.
That makes sense.
So would we ask for it to be submitted annually then to the building commissioner telling the agreements that they continue or if they have?
Well, I, I think the enforcement would be when they start seeing parking on either Independence Way or Dunn Mary Road, that the building commissioner gets involved and here we go. Uh, I don't think it needs a bureaucratic, uh, uh, um, you know, follow-up.
I, I think adding language to Paul's point that the total parking spaces onsite and off-site total at least a hundred ninety-two spaces is fine.
Yep, okay. Thanks a lot.
Did you have another comment, Paul, on another condition or was that it?
No, no, that's, uh, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, Denise, Aaron?
I, I just heard, um, Liza mentioned an apartment, uh, building in the area, uh, that was, I don't know, there was a budding or semi-abutting. Are they okay with this expansion or has anybody talked to them?
Yeah, there was a letter in the file in support of it from the owner.
Okay.
I guess I just have one quick question regarding the setback, will there be screening, uh, added to that in that eleven-foot buffer zone between the south side of the church property and the apartment building? Will there, are, you know, some sort of landscaping done to buffer it?
So I don't think we have anything specifically, but the good news is on their side, it's very heavily buffered. Um, we could probably afford to do a little bit there, but just for the fire department to be able to walk through there, um, between the retaining wall and so forth, there's, there's not too much room, but as I said, the good news is the neighbors have a thirty-foot buffer and it's heavily vegetated, so it kind of, uh, takes care of itself in some respects.
Alright, I just wanna see that, uh, let me just look at that again real quick. But, uh, okay, that's all I got so far.
Alright, um, we can open for a public comment. I don't think we really received anything, there was the letter in the application from the applicant from, um, Mr. Keller about the abutter saying he was in support and reviewed the plans. Um, Anna, nothing else you've heard, right?
No, Mr. Chair, we didn't receive anything else.
Okay.
And, uh, just for the record, I may have misspoke, it looks like about a twenty-foot buffer, they must have got some relief from the thirty themselves. But, uh, it's a, it's a decent buffer.
And no one's here to speak from the public? David, no one's come in, right?
No.
Okay. Okay. So I'll make a motion to close public comment. Need a second?
This is Paul, a second.
And a roll call vote. Herb on seek is to close public comment.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard?
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
Favor.
And I'm in favor. So public comment's closed. It brings it back to the board for deliberation. Attorney Cox, did you just want, were there other comments about the conditions you wanted to discuss?
Just two very rare ones. So when I was reading suggested condition one, I actually thought that's a really excellent finding, but not really a condition. Sort of describes the project and what's proposed. So I wanted to make, I mean, the board could leave it as a condition, I suppose, but to me, that's a really good finding and description of the project. And then, condition three, there's just a typo. It says there's eighty-two spaces onsite. In fact, there's eighty-three parking spaces onsite.
Okay.
That was it.
So should we just remove condition one, do you think, or?
I think if the board in its findings wanted to turn that into a finding, to me, that's where it fits.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions or thoughts or want to make findings? No, no one? All right, I will make a motion to approve appeal number twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-seven. The Brazilian Assembly of God has applied for modification of special permit in accordance with section two forty dash eight A, three modification permit for exempt uses. The application, the applicant is a nonprofit religious institution, and they propose an approximately nine thousand four hundred square foot addition to this existing church on the property. The expansion will increase the number of seats, and the existing steeple will be removed and the ridgeline lowered. The proposed expansion will meet all building setbacks except for the southerly side yard setback, which is proposed at eleven feet where thirty feet is required. The proposed five hundred and seventy-six seats require one hundred and ninety-two parking spaces where eighty-three currently exist. The applicant has made parking agreements with abutting properties. Zoning relief is requested in accordance with section two forty dash thirty-three E, both requirements, side yard setback, section two forty fifty-six schedule of off-street parking, and section two forty dash thirty-three special screening requirements. The subject property is located at nine fifty-nine Mary Dunn Road, Kansas, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map three-three-two is parcel zero-one-two. It's located in the IND Industrial Zoning District. The application, I find the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for grant of a modification permit. Section two forty-eight A allows for alterations for exempt uses. We have determined this is an exempt use, and so it falls in that category. Site Plan Review Committee found the project approvable subject to zoning relief in a letter dated February seven, twenty-twenty-three. And after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or neighborhood affected. Those are my findings. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote on approving the special part modification with findings. Herb on seek.
I am in favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
I am in favor.
Denise Johnson?
Favor.
And I am also in favor. And so, I will move this with the special conditions on the staff report.
March ninth.
March ninth, twenty-twenty-three. We're going to strike condition one as written on the staff report and modify, well, modify condition three to specify there's eighty-three currently provided onsite, and the applicant shall continuously provide parking agreements to never be less than one hundred and ninety-two, one hundred and ninety-two total spaces.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Can I interrupt for one second? Do you want to move that number one condition into the findings?
I mean, it basically is the findings as written, I think. I think it's just a copy of basically the legal notice right there.
Right.
So I think we can just remove it.
Okay.
And then move condition two into condition one and so on, four conditions. But three, we just want to modify to say that the proposed expansion shall require one hundred and ninety-two parking spaces where eighty-three are provided onsite to continue to remain and not fall below one hundred and ninety-two, I guess?
Well, continuous parking provisions on and off-site for at least one hundred and ninety-two spaces.
Okay. Continuously while in operation.
Yep.
All right. And then the others as written on the staff report. Roll call vote on the conditions. Herb on seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So Attorney Cox, you guys are all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have one, I had one question. Where, where are the services going to be held during construction? Not a deal break, but just curious.
There's an answer to that.
I thought there would be.
Dennis, do you want to, you're on mute still.
Hello, hi. We're going to be moving to a warehouse that we found in Yarmouth for, for that time.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, correspondence we received none. Matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Anything? Upcoming hearing, oh, go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Chair Dewey. I just wanted to congratulate your member Denise Johnson. I did watch the planning board meeting that was most recent, and she cited how faithful your committee is to the regulations and how she applied that rationale toward the evaluation of the issue that was before the planning board. And I just thought, I'm so proud of this committee. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
And thank you, Denise, for your representation to the planning board.
Thank you, Chris.
So upcoming hearings, April twelfth is in person, and we do have the solar TJ solar coming back. Somewhat busy night that night, I think. And then April twenty-sixth, we're online, May tenth in person, and May twenty-fourth online. Motion to adjourn.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, no.
Go ahead, Paul.
I don't, has there been a ruling by the state?
Not to my knowledge.
No, so we don't know what's going to happen after April twelfth.
Okay.
In terms of virtual or in person.
That will be, to be determined.
Okay. Keep us updated, and then it's going to matter on meeting notification deadlines if we just go in person.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn. Any second? Roll call vote. Herb on seek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Johnson?
Favor.
And I'm also in favor.